This meeting come to order. Today is Tuesday, November 7, 2017. There's a study session of the Prescott City Council. Roll call, please.
Mayor Oberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lizell.
Here.
Councilwoman Orr.
Here.
Councilman Siskah.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
All are present.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilwoman Wilcox.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for taking time out of your day to come in to this second study session we have for the Deepwell Ranch rezoning master plan. And we're going to probably have about an hour and a half of general discussion. And then the last 30 minutes, I'll be opening it up for public discussion. And we have our deputy clerk back there. And if anybody would like to speak, go ahead and sign up back there. And then we'll call you in order that you have signed up when we have that opportunity. If you do come up to speak, try and keep your comments focused on what we've been talking about and also try and keep them concise so we can get as many people up as possible. And, you know, I'll limit you to five minutes. And if you start to go over or it looks like you're going to go over, I'll go ahead and give you a quick warning at one minute from the time you have to stop your comment. At this point, I think it would be very good for us to hear from the city attorney. You know, we have a lot of people writing in saying that they want us to vote no on this. And I think it would be very beneficial for the attorney right now to take an opportunity to explain to everybody what our legal responsibilities are in approving or disapproving this annexation and rezoning.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and council. So what is on the screen now is the current or existing zoning of the property. This is the property owner's vested right to develop the property. As you recall, last week, George Worley explained what those, you know, what those color boxes mean and what they are. And so as of today, the owner, the property owner could develop multifamily housing, mixed use, single-family, business regional, and light industrial. And I'd also note, as you recall from last week, Mr. Worley said that Prescott zoning is considered inclusive zoning. In other words, what you can do in the zoning category includes all of the less intense or all of the lesser uses. So business regional could include multifamily housing, single-family housing, mixed use the same. Multifamily housing could include single-family. And so the only exception to that rule is industrial light doesn't allow for residential uses other than certain odd things like dormitories. So that is the property owner's vested right and so to do it. If the city were to prevent that from occurring, this zoning from occurring, even if you, notwithstanding the application, it would amount to some type of regulatory taking for which basically the city would have to buy the property in its simplest terms. Any questions on that issue, council? Okay. George, could you go then? Okay, here we go. So this is the most recent calculation by our planning, our community development department as to what the existing zoning allows and what the proposal allows. For my purposes, the most important category is the top column horizontally. The current existing zoning would allow for nearly 16,000 housing units. And that would be its most intense, most dense development. The current, or the proposal, would allow for a total of 10,500. Now, to qualify that, the existing zoning, 16,000, is really kind of a theoretical number. Once you add in streets and some parks and maybe space for schools, open space, that kind of thing. The practical reality is, is that 16,000 probably is reduced anywhere from 20 to 30%. So that's still, my math is, it's still about 12,000 to 13,000 housing units that could be done realistically or practically under the current existing zoning. Any questions?
I have one. The fact that the applicant is requesting a development that would be less than what he's entitled to is not considered a taking.
No, because it's the owners, the owner has the right to request a zoning or a rezoning of the property that would allow for few, say, fewer housing units. Remember that, you know, the existing zoning at 16,000 housing units probably wouldn't allow for the roughly two to, I think, two to three million in commercial space. So there is that sort of trade-off, that the 10,500 also then allows for roughly, I think, 2.9 million square feet total over the life of the project, commercial or non-residential space. If you took the 16,000 housing units, that would take away all of the business regional and allow only for commercial industrial type uses in that, if you want to go back a slide, George, in that lavender-colored IL. So there is a little bit of a trade-off. I think the primary concern we're hearing is too many houses, you know, too many housing units. Again, so if you're comparing apples to apples, the current zoning, and I think staff's view, allows for more housing units than what's being proposed by the developer.
So the voluntary downzoning.
Yes.
Of the private property doesn't hold culpable financially.
Right.
The citizens of Prescott for the downzoning.
In a sense, it's kind of a downzoning overall. It's, to me, it's more of a lateral zoning from one, because I think it talk, and I'll defer to the planning folks, in a sense, this zoning could allow for what the master plan land use is proposing. I mean, other than in the IL, you couldn't have housing or residential uses, whereas the master plan type zoning would allow for some housing. But again, that's still taken out of that 10,500 total number. So whether it's a downzoning, it's a little bit hard to determine. But I think at best or at worst, it's lateral zoning, because it's roughly equivalent but with fewer housing units under the current.
However, it's voluntary.
It is voluntary.
Right.
Right. It's all, and it's part of the process and part of a rezoning, as I said last week, somewhat of a negotiation. You know, developer asks, owner asks for something, and there's some give and take. And I think at the end, in the end, the question, and I'll reiterate, the question for the council is, is, you know, at the end of the negotiation for a rezoning, is that a better overall use of the property from the citywide perspective than what's currently legally allowed or entitled? Obviously, for the owner's standpoint, it's the same question, but is it better for the property owner?
I have a question. And this may be better answered by George or Tom. The existing zoning is based on the general plan that was approved by the voters in 2015. And the layout of Deepwell Ranch proposals is, to me, substantially different than the land use plan. So I'm, my question is, why isn't a general plan amendment needed for this proposal?
I think I can answer that. The general plan is not intended to be zoning. The map, for practical purposes, looks a lot like a zoning map, but the uses and the designations are intended by state statutes to be somewhat fuzzy. All of what's currently under the zoning on the Deepwell Ranch, the area proposed for master plan of the Deepwell Ranch, is in conformance with the general plan. If you look at the general plan land use map and look at the uses that are described within it, all of those same uses are also within the proposed master plan. They're not asking for uses in a different way or in a different circumstance than are already permitted by the general plan. And again, if you look at the map, it's not zoning. It does not run lot by lot. The intention is for those designations to be somewhat fuzzy. So the exact placement of them is not nearly as important in the general plan as it is in a zoning map. The fact that you can do single-family, and they've roughly put all of their single-family in the same area that our zoning allows it, is a good thing. They match up. But because the general plan doesn't do the same thing as zoning, and the fact that they've, I'm not going into detail of all of those layers that we talked about last time, the fact that they've layered all of the uses potentially over one another and covering a larger area, we believe is in conformance with the general plan's land use intent, which is that list of conditions and list of uses that are identified as permitted. So we believe it's in conformance with the general plan.
And remember, the general plan is not just a land use general plan. It has a bunch further issues, like open space and trails and, you know, those kinds of things. And I believe the conversation's been that the master plan actually is almost more in conformance with the general plan than the current zoning. The current zoning is, you know, I'm not sure you can say it's more in conformance, but because it deals with a lot of other things like open space, big areas of open space, it also meets a lot, those criterias better, I think, than what they could do under current zoning, which is sort of rows of houses with, you know, a certain amount of open space, but it could be smaller pieces rather than consolidated larger pieces of open space, which again is a pretty important master plan, I'm sorry, general plan concept.
Okay. But in the plan and the existing zoning, there's a reason for having industrial land use designated to, next to a major road or a major intersection. So location is an important factor. And what you're saying is that because they're moving around the land uses and they still have all the same land uses, it's still conforming to the general plan.
And I apologize, I don't have all of their use layers in here. But if you go through the use layers that are, and you all have copies of the master plan, if you go through the various land use groups, what you'll see is those areas that we've identified for no residential use, for instance, are almost exclusively identified in their plan for no residential uses. They've simply gone from industrial to an open space or civic designation instead of modifying where that is. The primary purpose of the industrial zoning, as it was initially applied to the property and as it was initially put into the general plan, was to protect the end of the runway from an encroachment of residential, specifically low-density residential. We get the most complaints from single-family homes, not from multifamily. So the intent was to try to keep those away from that area. Their master plan does the very same thing. It keeps those single-family residential, low-density residential uses away from that same area. As mentioned earlier, the city attorney mentioned that all of the other land use designations pretty much allow, through a hierarchy of anything that's less intensive than the maximum allowed within that district, is permitted in that district. Of all of the uses up here, the most intensive is the business regional. It allows the most other uses. It allows everything except industrial, as shown on the map. The least intensive is the single-family. That's the light color at the top, the light yellow. That allows no other uses than single-family effectively. Their master plan shows effectively the same thing. They're allowing multi-types, multiple types of uses in all of the districts and all of the physical area of the map where we already would allow multiple types of uses. So that was the reason why we came to the conclusion that, from the land use map standpoint, this is in conformance.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Siskah.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're talking about high-density, multi-use land. So let me tell you, let me read to you what the general plan says about high density. In fact, the general plan actually addresses low density, which seems like a lot of people say that they prefer. Well, it says, "Low-density uses are less efficient uses of land. This causes a loss of natural view shed as new areas are developed and places a greater burden on water, sewer, and road infrastructure. Longer utility supply lines and extended roads are more expensive to build and operate and maintain. This also increases dependence on the personal automobile for transportation and adds traffic demand on the road network. Public transit, such as bus service, is most efficient where a dense population exists." I repeat, "is most efficient where a dense population exists in compact clusters. Suburban development tends to isolate neighborhoods from service centers and creates the opposite of the pedestrian-friendly historic atmosphere, which attracts new residents and is often used to describe the character of Prescott." That is from our general plan.
City Attorney, are you done?
I am.
Okay. I think what I will do now is, irrespective of the fact that we have a sign-up sheet back there for the last half hour, if anybody has any particular questions on our legal responsibility and maybe it wasn't addressed by the attorney, come on up and ask your question. And you ask it of me, but I'll have the attorney answer the question.
Yes. Chuck Queen, 5983 Symphony. My main concern is to understand how the master plan would operate relative and different to how the council and planning division operate currently if it were to be accepted in its current state.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure I really understand the question about, I mean, I think if you're asking about, you know, ultimately, the development agreement, things like that, you know, we're still working with the developer on getting, at least some, getting close in terms of the language of the development agreement, but it's not ready to discuss at this point.
I think I can help you understand what I'm concerned with is specifically if you go to section 41C where it states that the master plan, and that same section is referenced throughout the development agreement exhibits currently on their site, is going to override any current or future, it says amend, but that effectively overrides, any current or future city rules, regulations, it goes on and on. That's where my main concern is.
And let me just clarify that language. The intent of that language, and to the extent it needs to be worked on, is that the master plan and development agreement will propose some modifications or amendments to certain city rules and regulations. And where those amendments and modifications are agreed to by this council or by the council, those amended or modified rules will supersede the conflicting city rule. It's part of a master plan. In other words, there could be things as innocuous as sidewalk width or street sections or certain processes may be changed. For instance, the developers proposed a sort of a design review in certain part of the project. We don't do design review. We actually see elevations in what buildings look like. It's rare in Arizona. Scottsdale, Sedona, a few other cities do that. We don't do that at a public level. So those would be things that would conflict with the city's land development code. But those would govern this project. And that's the nature of a master plan, is that, you know, the benefits that the public or the city gets out of a master plan are sort of a, you know, are balanced with some modifications to process, modifications to certain specifications, requirements, for instance, you know, that the city has, because the nature of a master plan is, you know, for lack of a better term, it's kind of customized zoning for the property. That's what it's supposed to be. So it's not this sort of generally broad, you know, that the city rules and regulations and the city code don't apply to this project. You know, I'll give you, for instance, there was some discussion about any ordinance that the city adopts in the future that affects land, you know, the use of property, wouldn't apply to this development. Well, obviously, you know, that has to be narrowed down to, you know, certain specific zoning issues or changes in the land development code that, you know, that was essentially would agree to freeze the current, certain current rules and regulations in the land development code, but wouldn't apply to, for instance, let's say the city adopted a barking dog ordinance, or as we did, I don't know, a year or so ago, you can't feed wild animals on your property. Well, that kind of thing is going to apply universally. Yeah, you know, so when we talk about rules, regulations, codes that affect your ability to use land, we're talking about zoning and land development type codes. Obviously, building code's going to apply as it amends forward. Life safety issues are always going to apply as they're changed. Certain, you know, there's language about moratoria that's being proposed, we agree to now, regardless of whether the state, you know, the state legislature changes that moratorium language. Basically, we're prohibited from imposing any kind of land use or building moratorium. If we do it, it has to be for a very specific time period, has to be for a very specific reason. It's a very developer-favorable state law that we're mandated to follow. And the proposals that, you know, for this purpose of this development, the city agrees to, you know, that that language would remain in effect, whether or not it were made more, less strict or more lenient, however you want to look at it. So that, I understand your concerns. You voiced them a number of times, but it's a very, very specific agreement that only where the master plan or development agreement modify or amend a specific city requirement, that's where the master plan or development agreement would control. Otherwise, if it's not mentioned in the master plan or development agreement, all city rules, regulations, and codes would govern.
Okay.
In other words, they could, they could come to you and say, or in the plan, say, "We have a dark sky ordinance in the city of Prescott. However, because we're on the ranch land, ours is going to be stricter than what the city..."
It'd be stricter. There are instances where that's the case.
There are, you know, there are examples where they want to have a more strict requirement than, like, for instance, the design review. We don't do that. But, you know, there's a certain level, a quality level. Now, if they came to the city and said, "We don't want dark skies to apply," and you all said, "Nope, not a deal breaker." You know, and they said, "Okay, fine." And that's effectively what's happened during the process. Dark skies applies. You know, they're, I mean, a lot of these things are relatively innocuous, I think, George is a good way to put it, and fill in if you want. But there were instances where they wanted to do historic streetlights, mandate it. Now, we don't require that out, you know, outside of, you know, the downtown area. They want that to be part of their engineering, you know, code requirement. We agree to that. That governs, because remember, this is going, the owner, the foundation, is not a developer and can't be a developer. So as this, as parts of these properties are taken down by various developers, they're going to be bound by those rules and regulations. So the development agreement, master plan, governs the, governs the development of the property regardless of who the owner is. Because the owner, it's been told to us, and, you know, and I think we're pretty, we're absolutely confident, the owner's not going to develop any of this. They can't. They're prohibited by IRS code. Can't be a developer. So they're going to sell off the property to a potential developer. That developer isn't bound by the master plan and the development agreement.
Okay. I think that answers a lot of my concern, and I appreciate that answer. I still have some, because like in the, currently is listed on their website, the master plan administrator can implement paid parking on public streets. And there's different things in there where, let's just say, the language needs to be cleaned up is probably the best way I know to put it.
Don't disagree with that.
Okay.
I think city manager, public workers got, I might think they had like 300.
We can talk a little bit, if we get that far down the agenda today, we can discuss what they're working through. There was a list of 90 areas that we were working on, trying to find some agreement about some of the parameters that we're comfortable with as well as the developer. They worked through 44 out of 45 just the other day, I think Friday. I think the hope is that they're going to spend some time this afternoon going through the second half of the list. And I think John alluded to this, a lot of these things are tweaks around the margin. But at the end of the day, where you're going to decide that the master plan supersedes your regulatory authority now, you're going to have to be 100% comfortable with that. This isn't going to be something that staff decides or is decided in a vacuum. This is your decision. And I can tell you, there are instances where I think what they're proposing are better than what we have on the books. And there's some instances where we're going to talk about it.
And it's part of the give and take process. Another example, and maybe this is probably the most helpful, maybe in my mind, is parking, is we have a fairly, I guess, demanding parking requirement. Well, that's not always a good thing, because, you know, you have big parking spaces, you have, you have big, the spaces themselves are sometimes maybe too big. They're, the developer's trying to sort of ratchet that back so you don't have these big swaths of black, you know, of blacktop, of pavement for parking purposes. They want to reduce that. It maybe forces, you know, pedestrian use, bicycle, public transit type use when parking is hard. You know, for instance, San Diego prohibits developers, and I know we're not San Diego, we're never trying to be that, but it prohibits development from, including parking. If, so in other words, it forces projects to, you know, the users of those projects to take public transit, walk, do carpool, whatever. So I think the idea that the developer's trying to have less parking or fewer parking spaces and maybe smaller spaces or whatever in certain, you know, it sounds like they're trying to get a reduction of the city requirement, but I think the nature of this project, it sort of works and it's better overall. And it's mostly going to affect the people in the project itself. It doesn't mean they get more housing units because they have fewer parking spaces. If 10.5 is the number, 10.5 is the number. You know, they don't get more commercial development by having fewer parking spaces. The number's the number. So, but you maybe get more open space, maybe you get more parks, maybe you get more landscaping. Maybe you get a better opportunity to create some sort of public transit or public transportation. So those are the kinds of things that we're working on. It's very, it's kind of piece by piece, and it's give and take.
Any other specific questions from the public on legal requirements? Any from the council? Questions, comments? Okay. What do you got next?
Well, I think we want to get into the meat of the agenda. And if you guys turn to the second page of your printout of the presentation, George is going to go through a comparison of the master plan versus current development. Then we're going to get in, well, I think there was a series of things after the first item, just to compare and contrast beyond the housing density. After that, we're going to get into the planning and zoning commission's recommendations and conditions of approval and what's been worked through. Hope to get through water resources so everybody here at the dais and also the public understands what water's already there, there in theory, and hope to be there. And then the last thing would be to try to get through the airport impacts and protection. We also have items six and seven, which are the public works conditions and the development agreement framework. I think that those are probably not going to get done today in 90 minutes, but we'll try to move in an expedited fashion, but also a fashion that allows you to ask any questions you have to make sure you fully understand what's being proposed. With that, I'll turn it over to George.
Thank you, sir. So one of the things that we received relatively late during the process of planning commission review from planning commissioner George Sheets was abbreviated comparison of development with standard zoning and development with some sort of master plan. And it was a great format to build on. We took some of those things and just expanded them a little bit for conversation purposes, maybe a little more explanation associated with it. To give you an idea of why most planners, most professional and private, public and private planners are in favor of master planning projects rather than simply letting the zoning develop as it will somewhat piecemeal. Zoning has some restrictions and some controls over the general location of things, but it really doesn't have much else effect on the types of development or compatibility within a particular zone. So you could have two types of business uses that really aren't very compatible with each other develop next door to each other under commercial zoning, under the standard zoning process. Master plan allows for a review at a deeper level of whether or not something is compatible or not, or whether it's appropriate for particular locations or not. So master planning, from our perspective, is at a preferred approach over the standard zoning. We've gone through a list of some of the things. zoning. We've gone through a list of some of the things, land use decision making, patterns of developments. There are greater flexibilities associated with the decision making of land uses within a master planned area, depending, in this particular case, depending on the, the language in the master plan itself. It allows for, again, through those layers of land use groups, a greater flexibility for what goes where, allowing you to intersperse things that may not be allowed under current zoning. For the most part, standard zoning intends to, its, its very purpose is to separate uses apart. That's what zoning was originally created for, was to separate uses from one another. A, a lot of that was artificially done. If you look at traditional downtowns, uses are not separated, they're mixed. Master plans allow you to do that generally to a lesser degree than you have with a traditional downtown like ours. But it also adds that flexibility of mixing uses. Again, you can have neighborhood commercial uses without having to specifically delineate a corner for only that. That corner has flexibility to be more than just a commercial use. It could be residential, or it could be commercial, or it could be multifamily. Other things like traffic circulation, parks and open space layout, all have better controls through a master plan than they do under standard zoning. Parks, open space and trails under standard zoning are almost always an afterthought to the initial process. Someone comes in with a master site plan, or they come in with a subdivision plat, and then once that's in, and once that's been reviewed, do we start talking about making trail connectivity or making open space connections between adjacent subdivisions? It's not thought enough beyond that initial approach until you actually see something submitted to you. With the master plan, many of those framework issues are addressed early. They're addressed through the master plan, so that when a subdivision comes in later, they have something to work from. They know they have trail connectivity requirements at certain areas, or certain widths, or certain volumes. And the same with streets, the same with open space. So again, we see that as a preference for master planning over the existing zoning. One other issue that comes into play that's often missed in the, the whole development process is the sense of place. Most developments, including most of Prescott, create a sense of place by accident through the development that's occurred. If you come downtown Prescott today, there's a sense of place. You know you're in downtown Prescott. It feels like downtown Prescott. That happened by accident. That, that happened by circumstance. A master plan allows someone to determine they want something like that and influence it. You can't fully control a sense of place, but you can influence the sense of place creation through the master plan process. And we sense from what's been described that that's exactly what the deep well planners intended when they developed the plan, and that that's what the Deepwell Ranch Foundation wants for that particular area. They want a, a specific sense of place of that area. It's going to be different than downtown Prescott. It's not intended to replicate. It would be something that is beneficial and that people will actually buy into from an emotional level, not just purchase a house in it, or purchase a business in it. So those are the, of, of all of those lists, those are the primary things that we see as major benefits to master planning, again, from the professional planner side.
I've got a question. As I understand, there's going to be some specific master plans, like for drainage. I see up there you have drainage, traffic, utilities, things of that nature.
At, at this stage, you would have what are called master reports, and we, we have drafts of those that are in, in the negotiation stage between our engineering folks and, and their engineering folks. Those master reports, again, set a framework, not specifics to a particular area. All of that sort of occurs as the development occurs. So some of this will occur somewhat like traditional zoning would allow it to. The difference is you have this framework around it that says what can go in there, what types of uses can go there, and what types of conditions can be applied to the development.
So you're telling me they're supplemental to the master plan that we're looking at right now?
That's correct, yes.
And they'll come at some later date?
The master reports would be attached to the development agreement, most likely.
Okay.
And then from there, individual specific site development reports would be done just like they do now, and would be submitted at the time of their building permitting.
Mayor, can I, George, I want to thank you for this. This is the piece I was asking for last week, that it really, I think, for everyone, I'm sure it's on our website, it really does speak to why a master plan over the traditional zoning. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
With the--
Excuse me, George. Are you going to, are you going to go over the airport?
My next step was to run through relatively quickly the list of conditions from our planning commission, but if you want to take this out of order--
No, no, I, I don't want to do that. I was just, you stopped at parks and open trails, development near the airport.
Again, we have some defense, so to speak, of the airport. Again, primarily, it's single family residential that causes issues in close proximity to airports. So by requiring the original area be zoned as an industrial light designation, you prohibit single family residential in that area. This allows for more variety of uses that still exclude residential for the most part. There was one small area within what is currently shown as industrial light that would propose to have a mixed use of commercial and residential. The planning commission accepted that as part of their review process. They felt that that was reasonable at that location.
The mayor had asked, and I think we'll make this as brief as possible, but for Tyler to kind of do an inventory of the complaints we've had and the nature of the complaints. So we're not saying this is all encompassing. This is the best we could come up with with the data we have available, based in two different areas, pre-planning commission consideration and then post-planning commission consideration.
I think what I'll add a little bit to that, I've had a number of people come to me and say, you know, did you get my email? Did you get my letter with my concerns on the deep well? And, and I think it was important for us to show that everybody out there and anybody else that might see this, that, you know, we are looking at what you're concerned about. We have them listed up here, other than the people that just say flat, no, we don't want any growth, we don't want any, any more development. That's not up here. But where there were very specific concerns about water, traffic, density, some of the other, airport, we put those up here. And we continue to get more letters and emails in daily, and I think we even took some of these out of the newspaper, out of the courier. So, and we keep getting them every day. So I just want to let you know that, you know, we're taking a look at everything that people are submitting to us, and hopefully through this process, we will cover all these issues. And they may not be answered to your satisfaction, but at least we will have looked at them.
I can't add, I can't add much more than that. Just to add a little bit, though, we, we tallied up the total comments. So on the top there, it shows the pre-planning and zoning positive recommendation on October 12th. And we tallied up individuals, but each of those letters usually came with three or four things that they were concerned about. So we marked those as a frequency of concern. So if there's 27 people making comments, 12 of those were for water, 10, you know, the number of frequency that came through, 10 for traffic, seven for growth, and on down the line. And then post-planning and zoning positive recommendation on October 12th, there were 43 individual people that either wrote, or called, or left a message, or wrote in the paper. And that had to do, you can see the water, the traffic, the growth and density on that. So I don't know if there's any questions regarding this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So as was Tyler just mentioned, planning commission did ultimately, after significant effort, and I talked a little bit about that effort last time, make a recommendation to move this forward, which is why it's before you now. That recommendation was a vote of four to three. As part of that recommendation, they developed 21 proposed conditions to recommend to you to consider for the development. After planning commission's action, during and after planning commission's action, staff of various departments has been in constant negotiation or discussion with the planners for deep well. If, this is an ongoing process. We don't do a segment and stop and wait on something else to happen. We're in constant communication. As a result of those discussions, many of the 21 conditions have been addressed to various degrees, or they have been specifically called out and will be proposed to you as part of the modifications that are in the, the development agreement. So I'm going to quickly run through those, but again, quickly. If you have specific questions, please let me know. I think it's very important we move past this to the water questions and on to the airport questions. So there were questions specifically about density. That was, that was something that's been proposed to be addressed through the development agreement concept. We had some information proposed today that, that in fact, I believe, brings the density down, subject to availability of water in the future, would drop it below the 10,500 under the current water that's available, down to 8,000 residential units, and then would allow for, once the big chino water becomes available, the additional residential units back up to the 10,500 number. Master plan compliance with the development code has been worked out. Those deviations will either be addressed in the development agreement, or they have been modified already in the development, or, excuse me, in the master plan. There are a few things left that we certainly want to discuss from the planning side. For those DA attachments, I'm sorry, development agreement, when I say DA, attachments are, those things are still in the works. We still have a few things we want to discuss, lighting questions and certain things like that, that, that they're not hung up at a stop at this point. It's ongoing. Rules, regulations, policies in the master plan, unless they're specifically waived or amended in the development agreement. That's exactly what a development agreement is for. So this framed the, the setting for us to develop specific criteria and specific waivers through the development agreement process. Public Works Department Conference of Report, they've provided some reports already. They provided some information already as part of this, but they can't actually do this until they've completed their negotiations. You just heard a moment ago from the city manager that those are also ongoing, including this afternoon, to address those types of things that haven't quite been, we haven't reached a middle ground on. We haven't reached a, a level of approval or concurrence on. So that has been partially processed. Airport Authority, airport stakeholders, Conference of Report, you have a copy of that. A copy of that was produced and provided to the planning commission. That information is very clear, very important. We have represented from the airport, Jesse Baker is going to talk to you a little bit later. She will touch on many of the things that were addressed in that report. Site plan review by planning commission. The current state of affairs is they've agreed to certain types of development in certain areas to be subject to that review, and other development elsewhere within the subdivision, less so. Primary concern by planning commission and especially by planning staff was what happens around the periphery of the, the master planned area. Those are the developments that will have the most effect on nearby property owners who are outside of the development area, outside of the master plan. So those areas are subject to the, the site plan review and evaluation process. City, county, state subdivision rules apply. Those rules apply. We cannot waive state law through a development agreement or master plan. Current general plan calls for commercial and open space in zone three. This is the area I mentioned just a moment ago. There's a small portion of that zone three that's proposed to allow for a mix of residential and commercial within the same structures. That was agreed to immediately by the Deepwell Ranch folks. That has been incorporated into the version of the plan that you have before you today. So that one was resolved as well. Maximum building height limited to 50 feet or less, that was something else that started out. The original master plan proposed to allow a much taller building than that. There are reasons for it in the master plan. Those reasons didn't carry enough weight with the planning commission for them to accept it. That was worked out. Again, the deep well plan today has a maximum of 50 feet, which is the city's maximum height for industrial and business zoning districts.
So, Mayor, can I ask a question? So, so George, when you say that's been resolved, you're saying--
They've actually modified, they've modified the plan to actually reflect that language. That's correct.
So, so we have met the condition?
Basically, what it means, Billy, is that the staff and the applicant have reached an agreement that both parties are comfortable with.
Okay.
So that's what the check marks denote.
George, the document that we have, dated October 2nd, does not reflect all of these conditions.
No. Again, some of those are, are still under negotiation, still underway. So they're--
Can we expect that this document will be revised if the council agrees with these conditions, that the master plan will be rewritten?
Prior, prior to any action being taken by council, you will have the most up to date version of both the development agreement and the master plan available for you to read through beforehand.
Good, okay.
That, that's something we always try to provide you in advance.
Okay.
Landscape buffer, there is a particular issue that came up in regard to Pioneer Parkway with a, a request for an additional thickened landscape buffer adjacent to that. That is still being negotiated. That one is not resolved. It would be something that's addressed in the development agreement. Street landscaping and who maintains it is something that's always addressed in a development agreement. Pretty much every master planned development we have in town now has some kind of shared responsibility depending on the level of landscaping. The city's requirements are rather minimal. Most cases, a developer wants more landscaping in the right of way than the city does. We like that, but we don't want to maintain it, so we negotiate their ability to put additional landscaping in versus the ability of the city to maintain it, or the responsibility of the city to maintain it. Cell towers, utility sites, et cetera, are handled through SUP process. The special use permit process is actually a, a safety valve or a defense for the city when it comes to specifically cell towers, because there are very extensive federal regulations that apply, or limitations on local control that apply. They have agreed to follow through that process as we've already added setup in our codes. Trail systems throughout and how the connectivity occurs is something that's being negotiated. That also will be a DA topic. That's something that we're getting close on. We've provided them with master trails plans for where we anticipate the main trails to occur into and through their property. And they will have to work out some details internally for how subdivisions are laid out and connected to that master alignment, or master alignments. Existing city parking standards apply. There is a provision in our current code which allows any development to propose a modification of those standards. We, we require they provide us with what they propose, how it works, back it up with some data, and the city actually has the ability at staff level, at, at my boss's level, a community development director, to approve those. So that process allows them to, to deviate. I will point out and follow on a little bit with what the city manager said earlier, some of the proposals that they've made for shared parking, which allows for different types of use that operate at different hours of the day, for instance, to share the same parking lot, same parking spaces, is something that we've talked in the past about incorporating into our code. And you may well see a proposal to do that, a modification to the land development code to allow that in the future. Plant pallet listed similar to the city. We borrowed the plant pallet that we require for rights of way directly from the Arizona Department of Water Resources, and they've agreed to follow those same processes. Water saving methods, again, they've agreed that their intent is to reduce any unnecessary water usage. They're following through on the process similar to what we require under our current rules. Master plan follows these rules for night sky protection. A few things are still in, in flux on that, but for the most part, they will be following the city's night sky requirements. Wildlife movement, wildlife corridors, they've agreed to do the best they can. Some of the limitations for wildlife corridors unfortunately actually fall outside of both their and our control, and that is crossing State Route 89. To cross those with wildlife corridors, you need to have box culverts of certain sizes. Whether they get designed into a, a state right of way project is hard. We can influence it, but we can't control it. Future transit system for the master planned area, they readily and quickly made a modification to not only accept the concept, but also identify locations. A master park and ride facility location has been set aside or identified, and a number of transit related things like bus pullouts have been identified in the master plan. so that will actually show in the plan. Residential protection standards, they don't want to adopt the ones specifically out of the land development code because they're very rigid. Again, our land development code's designed to work with zoning that separates uses, but they have a whole set of design guidelines that incorporate buffering between uses. They are equivalent to our requirements in almost every case. And open space areas not have habitable buildings. One of the concerns we had was that the, one of the concerns the Planning Commission had was specifically the land use budget that we talked about last time. In the land use budget, they identified open space and civic as a single number, and they wanted to make sure that in fact that was divided into open space and civic uses, and that has been agreed. So that covers the Planning Commission's proposed list. If you have specific questions about it, I'm happy to try to answer those.
Questions, comments?
Just a comment, I think this is great because this is exactly what we needed to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick follow-up, we've continued to make contact with the planners, we're ongoing with this process, this is not over. Many changes are still being made. Most of them are not substantial changes at this point. We've gotten past the really big things.
George, one thing I know that's, it's more Public Works, but will they still follow our road standards and, and sewer standards and things that will take over eventually?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we won't deviate from that, and I don't think they've requested us to.
They have with some of their private streets, but not with public streets.
Thank you.
So Leslie will talk to you about water.
Okay, switching gears a little bit, thank you, George. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and the Planning, Zoning Commissioners. I know they worked hard on this project for quite a while. My name's Leslie Grazer, I'm the City Water Resource Manager. These are the same slides, that's why they're dated October 31st, as we had last week. And we added a couple of slides just for the sake of, we knew questions were coming in, whether through the paper or otherwise, and if we could provide a little more understanding to this, we wanted to be able to do that. So we thank George for being willing to let us add a couple more to the slides, slideshow, and get the right, thank you, onward. So, the next set of slides, this is to refresh the understanding of the city's State of Arizona-approved water portfolio, and specifically has, as it relates to the Deepwell Ranch reservation that has already been accounted for. So it's within our portfolio, it's been reserved, it's available, not only through the state's decision order, the legal document, but also as a reservation that was made through additional contracts by the city. This slide here is basically, provides the foundation for the existing water supplies within the city's portfolio that has been reserved by contract, once again, for this Deepwell Ranch project. We're going to run through these elements because basically we're going to try to do 50 years' worth of activity in 15 minutes if we can. So, we'll speak to the water transmission line easement, we'll look at the pre-annexation agreement, the water settlement quantities, and then also we have to wrap this all back into the city's decision order of assured water supply, which once again is a state document. Many people were in the area when this occurred, but it was roughly the 1998 time period that the city took all its supplies in and put them on the table, and worked with the state to develop a decision order of assured water supply. These are the same documents that are used in Phoenix and Tucson, even down in southern Arizona. We work, I work in acre-feet, and I know that our colleagues in Public Works work in million gallons per day, so we've tried to provide a comparison, but we move back and forth. But, and this presentation will stay in acre-feet. So the transmission line easement. The water that supplies the, and services basically the city customers years ago and today are lines that moved through the Deepwell Ranch. In 1967, the Deepwell Ranch granted easement to the city's 18-inch Chino Valley to Prescott transmission main that was needed. And looking at the history, it probably even dates before that because we had water coming from Del Rio Springs at one time, and it had to make its way here. But formerly in 1967, when the 18-inch line was coming into the city, there were arrangements, discussions, you know, good, good faith efforts by both parties to move and secure and maintain an 18-inch line, and of course now there's additional transmission mains as well. So, this easement agreement, just for reference sake, it's nice to know where these come from, I provided the book and page here. This easement granted Deepwell Ranch the right to connect to the pipeline and be served, but it didn't specify a quantity. And the reasoning for that is that there wasn't a 1980 Groundwater Management Act in place at that time. My estimations of some of the history is that the ranch was a ranch and they were looking for water supplies, I believe it was four connections, two to four connections, and it was under a certain PSI. So as time moves forward, we move into the subsequent, the 1967, the Groundwater Management Act came, became state law. And this is Title 45, and it's a, a thick set of rules. It's also supported by Arizona Administrative Code. So at that point, no quantity of groundwater was grandfathered by the State of Arizona corresponding to cities, the city's obligations to deep well from this 1967 agreement. If you know state law and you know how the 1980, 1980 Groundwater Management Act works, and the subsequent declaring the area out of safe yield, and instituting the assured water supply rules, those were for existing subdivisions. There were no existing subdivisions in play at that time. It was solely ranch, and it had a 1967 agreement regarding water. So, here again, the negotiations for the specific amounts of the increments that we discussed was completed by the city in Deepwell Ranch in 2009. And this provides a little more detail on that, so there was a pre-annexation agreement that was discussed and worked through quite, quite heartily by predecessors to myself, and there was a water settlement agreement. So the commercial and residential development of 7,000 acres of the Deepwell Ranch was contemplated by a procedural pre-annexation agreement and a water settlement agreement between the city and Deepwell. And here again, provide reference for this, if anybody's interested in looking this up, it is available at Yavapai County through their online records. So, to look at the increments themselves, and how this relates to our current portfolio. So the settlement quantities are 950 acre-feet of alternative water, and that's a first and second increments that are presently available. An additional 900 acre-feet called the third increment is from the prospective Big Chino water importation project. So, to, once again, kind of put this in time and also to address alternative water, what does that really mean? It's important to know the first and second increments, the city already had water supplies based on a 2005 decision order. That first increment was pulled aside off of that earlier DNO. The city went in to modify their decision order and came out in 2009 with a decision order, and from that, once it was approved and made it through all litigation, then the other portion was pulled off. Now, we also had within that decision order and things that were done at that time, the waiting for things to come out of the legal arena, Big Chino was placed into the portfolio as well, and so the 900 acre-feet was moved off. This term, alternative water, I provided it here so we can keep track of what these things mean. Alternative water is the portion of the city's portfolio that contains the renewable supplies of recharged and recovered surface water and reclaimed water. So the recovered and recharged surface water is water that comes from Watson and Willow Lakes. Those water rights were acquired by the city in 1998. The reclaimed water, the city's been reclaiming water for quite a long time, and actually had the first recovery, or the recharge facility. Before that, and even today, water still goes over to the golf course and other golf courses, but the Animal Pills has been irrigated with reclaimed water for decades. So these quantities are separate and distinct from the groundwater category within the city's assured water supply from the Department of Water Resources. I'm going to jump ahead a little bit, I know that we've show this all the time, and I apologize, but this is important because not everybody gets to see this maybe at the frequency that our elected officials and others. So, what we're saying is the, the state, this is the city's decision in order from the State of Arizona. When the area was declared out of safe yield, no more growth could occur on groundwater supplies. So the city took in what they were pumping and all their subdivisions, and that was current and committed groundwater. This project is working off of the alternative water. And that's why we make this distinction, because by state law, we have to manage these supplies differently. They're all rolled into the same portfolio, but we have to track them carefully. Once again, groundwater, this is absolutely dominated by the state. Whatever's on the books for how this goes is how it's going to go. In the alternative water, this is the area where we call the city's checkbook. So we know how it's been divided out, where the contracts are, and if we just want to dig in, because we can't dig into the whole portfolio today unfortunately, but deep well supplies are a combination of these two quantities here. They're not the only ones who have been riding or will be using this water supply. We have, gosh, I could say probably 300 contracts at this point on this water supply. So, once again, if we step back, one decision order, the water for deep well for the first increment was pulled off and set aside. It's recognized, it's been held. The second increment of 500 acre-feet was pulled off when this decision order came in, and then the third is going to be riding over here in the alternative water from the Big Chino. So, let me use the term one more time of alternative water. We use that because the state says you can no longer grow on groundwater supplies. New subdivisions will not be, subdivisions, residential or commercial, will not be approved by the state or the Department of Real Estate on groundwater supplies. So the city was very active and went forward with understanding what they could do next with renewable supplies. They are the alternative to pumping more groundwater per the state's set of rules. So that's what the city has been doing, it's been recharging and recovering treated effluent and surface water supplies. Not to dig in too far, I have to be careful. Surface water has its own set of rules that we have to follow, and then the treated effluent is slightly different.
Leslie, when you talk about alternative water... Do you mean that it's physically available, alternative water?
Absolutely. We do not recommend at any time that the, at the committee level or at council, if we don't have it physically available. And so a really good explanation or a good example of that would be this block right here. When I came onboard, this block is based on Big Chino being here in 2010, and we know that it's not physically being delivered. So, we look back at the records because we are, we're talking, we're talking about what's physically available. We know it's in our system, we know we can use it. The wastewater treatment plants, we're not meeting the projections, and the reasoning is we didn't have that huge growth spike that was expected. So, committee level and even at the council level, I made continued comments on that block and said, we, we're not issuing out if we know it's not coming to the plants. So, 92 acre-feet of this increase is what we have available that I can confidently say, council or committee, the Water Issues Committee, this is what we can talk about in terms of the block that's available physically for use.
We know it's actually physically available. Do we have groundwater monitoring going on?
Oh my gosh, I think this is the most heavily monitored AMA, Active Management Area, in the state. So, how we know? We have to report, the city has to report every year to the Arizona Department of Water Resources, all water movements, every type that we move around, every, every connection that we've made on the water supply, because they're tracking this because they have to know that we have not fallen out of compliance somehow. So, here again, that's how I know. I looked at the wastewater treatment plant records and said, I had kind of a sneaky feeling, if Big Chino's not here, we're not doing, able to do that recycling that happens, and that's what is expected by the state. They want you to move towards these renewable, alternative water supplies, and that's what the city has successfully done. Is it good? Should I move on? Yeah. Good.
As part of the Water Issues Committee, Leslie, thank you for your help over the number of years. And you know what? I, I don't mind saying it publicly, this city's far better off today because of your presence than we were five years ago.
Thank you, sir. And I think it's important to know that we stand on the shoulders of those before us. So, you know, the work that was done by my predecessors, and it, it's throughout the city. Water is not a one-person show. It's, it has legal department involved, it has Public Works, of course, involved. They're moving, physically moving the water, building the pipeline, preparing for the new development. Community development obviously is in the mix, so this is not, you know, water discussions are never just won by one means.
Very gracious, however, I will go back to the point that times change, management strategies change, and it's, it's nice to be able to work with somebody that understands conditions today aren't what they were 10 years ago, and today, conditions tomorrow won't be what they are today. And the city's, city's using a lot of, lot of technological advancements, and we're not going forward without competently managing our water.
Right, this, this community is important, and that's what we do here, we take care of the community. So we need to continue on the water settlement, so we have just the full picture as, as best we can, once again, and I think I'm probably blown 15 minutes, so I'll move quickly. So, this settlement, or this slide just continues the settlement quantities. The city's 2017 water policy describes the allocation of alternative water, so the city plans each year as to how that will be done. At this time, one acre foot can support five EPA WaterSense-certified single-family residential units, or eight, once again, they have to be EPA WaterSense-certified multifamily units. If we relate this to the Deepwell Ranch, at these unit allocations, the total reservation, which is all three increments, we have to look at these, I know we like to piece these, piece these things out sometime, but sometimes we have to look at it the whole and look, get, get the range. What are we talking? What does this look like? So, for all three increments of settlement water could support 9,250 single-family or 15,417 multifamily water-efficient units. And here again, this was just to look at the range. What is the possibility? Because once again, we don't know the, the future. We might, we know certainly that people are being more efficient with supplies through the assistance of technology and through cheered rate structures, but we can't necessarily fathom what will come next. So this is what we have at this time. Unit allocations, I, we've seen this, and I should probably just keep moving. So, we talk about managing this portion of the portfolio, the alternative water is similar to a checkbook. As you'll note, you know, in my planning diagrams, or the city's planning diagrams, Deepwell is already noted in this area, and then they're also noted off of the Big Chino branch as well. Here again, this is for planning purposes. We know the water is not physically here yet, so we don't issue out contracts, further contracts off of this block at all. We use it as a planning, helping, you know, the person who comes after me or after that person as to what was it looking like in this time period. Now we want to drill down specifically to the Deepwell account, so we keep spreadsheets on everybody. Deepwell Ranch, increments one and two, it totals 950. We have in contract, and we know which city contract it is, of course, these are the three contracts that are already in use, these are the quantities associated with those contracts. This is the total volume that's already been used, and this is the remaining volume from that 950. We'll look at it in one last, one last manner. These are the newer slides. Because we don't know what the world is going to bring us, and, and Deepwell's working very hard, but they don't know exactly what, how it's going to exactly lay out in the future. We took the housing types, there will be single-family and multifamily. We know what the allocations might be. If it's a single-family at this time, as according to policy right now, we allocate at .25 for single-family. If they're able, have a builder that is EPA WaterSense-certified, we might be able to allocate at a lower number. Same thing with the multifamily. So the number up here, the number of dwelling units supported by alternative water now physically available to Deepwell Ranch, meaning we're not, we're not really planning in the, the, the Big Chino because we know that's not physically here yet. Multifamily, or excuse me, single-family is in this range, so it could be up to almost 4,000. Multifamily would look a little, about 6,500, let's just round... Multifamily would look a little, about 6,500, let's just round numbers here. Number of additional dwelling units that could be supported with the 900 acre feet gives you another piece of the pie to look at, so to speak. And then we just come back to those really, the range, you know, we need to know what range we're working in. The total number of dwelling units supported by water granted to Deep Well Ranch by water settlement contract, this is what's remaining available. So we talk about 18, 1,850. This is what we know is available, because I just showed you what's already in contract. So that places single-family in, you know, 6,700 range up to, if it's multifamily intensive, then it's going to be 14,155. So with all projects, not this one, not just this one, all projects, they must file their building permit, their site plan, or their preliminary plat. And once we have that, and we know what's been locked, going to be locked down for a number of units, then we can take out of the reservation and apply it to it and put it in contract. So then, once again, I'm able to say, okay, at this point, it's time to add another line. A new subdivision from the Deep Well Ranch reservation has come to fruition, it's ready to go, and then they know what their new balance is. Last slide is, of course, there's just too many references to even, to even work with in a short time period that we have. But we wanted to show you, you know, what's coming up next. So November 28th, we would like to bring to council study session the draft 2018 Water Management Policy, for those folks who are interested in attending that meeting. December 12th is a council voting meeting to potentially adopt the 2018 policy. In March of 2018, this is where we roll up everything. How do we know we have the water? How do we know how much we've used this year? Those are the, that's the report that is compiled beginning in January and is due by March 31st at the state. And we provide a summary to the council on that as well. Last, for more information, we keep a City of Prescott Water Management page. And on that page, it breaks down, you know, the city, all its components in terms of water. So it tells us that we have an active management area and what we need to do there, what our policies are with our alternative water, how we handle drought, how we look at conservation, how we recharge and recover. And fortunately, there are some more pictures and not just legal documents in that area. And that's all I have at this time. And I guess I turn it back over to George.
Questions, comments?
Or questions?
Just like to say, nice job, Leslie. Takes a lot of work and a lot of time to keep track of all this stuff citywide, so thank you.
You do it.
Can I just make one? Leslie, you should go back one slide or two slides. Just want to make this absolutely clear. Along the same lines we talked about earlier about what the current zoning allows, and the city can't change, this water allotment, maybe go forward one slide for, and I'm sorry, that's, the reservations, the increments one and two in particular, those are legally binding contractual obligations on the city, that the city cannot take away those increments one and two. And any attempt to do that would, I can assure you, would result in a lawsuit, that a court would order us, put it back. So I just want to make that absolutely clear. I think the council understands that, and I believe the public understands that, but needs to be made real clear that this is an obligation that the city cannot unilaterally change.
Thank you. I guess.
Question?
Go ahead.
I know this is a little speculative, but there, a lot of people are wondering when and if and whether the Big Chino pipeline will be built. And I know first, we need to complete the monitoring study, and I think we have three more years of that study. Is that correct?
Three, yeah, three to four. It's science, so we move as fast as we can.
And hopefully, at the end of that three years, we will be able to conclude whether or not we're going to impact the Upper Verde River by pumping water out of the Big Chino, and if we are, what mitigation measures need to be taken. But at this point, we have no idea what the cost will be. Or do we? Do we have any estimate at all?
No, I don't have an estimate. As you know, probably there, looking at engineering staff, probably 90%, you know, the percent completion on the drawings for moving that water, we're at a high level, but, you know, 80%, I'm not sure what the percentage that they usually use, but somewhere very high. And at this point, we know that right of way is opened up along Big Chino Ranch Road, you know, it changes, it changes things. So I think it would be probably, you know, pretty unfair of me to even guess at something at this point. I had made an example of the Watson and Willow Lake reservoirs. Those were considered for purchase back in the 1940s, 1948. And there was probably a funding idea at that point, and then it rolled into the 70s and the 60s, and, you know, it just, well, it kept rolling through time. And I'm sure that how that was going to be funded was, and how it was going to work kept modifying as conditions changed. I think that we're going to see the same thing with Big Chino. I don't think we can put a hard number on the engineering costs at this point. It would probably, you could probably rerun this tape 20 years later and go, she was wrong. So I think it's better just to say, we'll have to keep working on this, just as, this is water supply, long-term. So we have to keep working on it, and then when the, everything aligns and we know we can move forward, we will. Watson Willow Lakes ended up being $15 million bond that the community decided to accept through a voter initiative. So that's all I have on that one. Unfortunately, I don't have a number for how much it'll cost.
So we're being asked to approve a master plan with about a little less than half of the dwelling units contingent upon the building of the Big Chino pipeline. But we don't know when that's going to occur. And I just find it difficult to approve a plan which is contingent upon something that may never happen. The voters would still have to approve an expenditure in excess of $40 million under our charter, and they may not want to do that.
And then the same could be held for what's existing now in Prescott, if everybody said, oh, I don't know if we're ever going to get those Watson and Willow Lakes. I don't know if we're going to have wells out in Chino. Let's just stop. Luckily, you know, as time moves on, we learn along the way. Big Chino, probably one of the best safety nets the city has. Big Chino is a physical supply, it's recognized in state law, it hasn't, it's not going to be necessarily argued as intensely as it was in the past. We'll just have to see. I wish I had a crystal ball, but I don't know if I could give you a reasonable cost nor timeframe as to when that supply will be needed by this area. It might be way past, you know, way past my time on this earth, but it's available.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Brodeur.
Thank you, Leslie. You can correct me if I'm wrong. Don't think I am. But if memory serves me right, Prescott has this whole discretion over the historically irrigated acreage out of the Big Chino. And that was to the tune of about 3,600 acre feet. And with regards to whether or not we use that water for mitigation or safe yield, and that's going to be split either 54 or 46 with Prescott Valley, who are financial customers in this, in this deal. But until we pump, we don't know if we have to mitigate. And we do have the ability to address how we affect the Verde River with at least 3,600 acre feet of water.
Yes, the city placed in resolution that they would use the historically irrigated acreage volume for mitigation. So that's on the books at this point.
That's right. And that's contractually done with BV. And this council, or a council of Prescott, will make that decision at some point when it's necessary.
Mayor, if I could just make a comment too on, as I understand, and Leslie, thank you for your presentation, it's excellent. Big Chino is not only about growth, Big Chino is also sustaining what we have now in Prescott. That's, it's about sustainability of our future.
Right. If we look at ADW, our fourth management plans and plans before that, they kept bringing in, you're going to need to import water, you're going to need to import water. And so the timetable for that, you know, once again, it's anybody's guess, but, you know, thankfully, the city, you know, as a protection for the community, made those steps. And how it'll be used in the future, once again, is, you know, up for
Thank you.
...decision-making.
I just want to caution that, if somebody always does it. When we're talking about Deep Well and Big Chino, I think we need to limit the Big Chino discussion to Deep Well Ranch and not sort of the broader issue, because we haven't really been agendized for that.
Leslie, I want to thank you for your briefing, and I can tell you, it's a very complex subject. And if everybody out there understood everything up here, my hat's off to you, because I've been looking at this for two years, and I'm still struggling with it, so. But I know that in our discussions in the past, you've talked about, you know, being prepared for drought conditions and ensuring that we keep ample supplies in the event of drought. I know on the effluent side, you know, we have the recovery wells out by the airport, and we're pumping from that same area, alternative water. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So part of the 2005 decision order was that the city had a requirement to start installing wells within the area of impact of the recharge facility. And so that was accomplished, and there continues to be work, of course, out of public works, because they have the infrastructure side to meet that.
And what do you do in relation to drought?
Well, the city already has in city code, when we start going, if we, there's a shortage. It could be a shortage for drought, it could be a shortage because a pump goes down. And so there's resource levels that, when we hit certain resource levels or challenges, that enacts certain activities that will have to occur in the community. We've always been, at least as long as I've been here, it's been basically just a standard status level of proceed along. There has been conditions where we had fire, or we had bark beetle and heavy, you know, use of water supplies by people to try to protect bark beetle trees that have been damaged by bark beetle. And that started to push the resource level a little bit. I hope that answers your question. Basically, we already have in code
You indicated in the passage, you put in a large fudge factor for drought, right?
Public Works with a safe production number, and if we see us coming even close, it starts triggering conversations with the city manager and then further decision-making.
Thank you. What do you want to do on the next presentation with about five?
Jesse, do you think you could get into the airport dialogue in five, 10 minutes?
Why don't we go ahead and at least start it?
You're not as verbose as George or John.
All right, here we go. My name is Jessie Baker, I'm the Assistant Airport Manager. So real quick, you did receive a packet from me that goes over in detail some issues that, it's more for information on things that you will want to know as city council moving forward, regardless of if you approve this plan or not. The things that we looked at specifically with the consultants and the Deep Well Ranch, we looked at specifically, first and foremost, FAA requirements. So what you want to know is, do they meet FAA requirements? Are they looking and abiding by FAA requirements? And that answer is yes. We looked at runway protection zones, everything that they have put together fully meet FAA requirements, fully meet protection of the airport. So really, that is the main thing that I know that you're looking for. That answer is yes, it is protected when it comes to that. We also looked at noise contours, navigation easements, those are further protections of the airport and things to understand. When you put residential near an airport, that is going to have a long-term impact on the airport fund and its employees. And then we also express the need for noise attenuation standards. Those are like heavier-duty windows, doors, that kind of thing.
Let me ask you one quick question.
Sure.
We're doing a airport master plan right now. So the current master plan from Deep Well, is that, are they looking at the contour lines based on the old master plan?
The old master plan. The new master plans have not been, the airport master plans, excuse me, have not been updated yet. So it's a little bit cart before horse. That being said, we have gotten with the consulting firm, and they have been more stringent on the expectation. So they have erred on the side of caution to expand those zones or take the most conservative route whenever they are doing their data analysis. So I think it's going to come up close. It is a little bit cart before horse, but I think that we've covered our basis and communicated with them to say, hey, we're going to grow, our plan is to grow the airport. And I think that they've taken that into consideration.
Okay, when will we know the exact new contour lines?
I would say first quarter of next year.
Okay. And that's after FAA approval?
Correct.
Okay, so at that point, then we'll have to get with Deep Well again and make sure that we meet the new contour lines?
Yes, we can. So moving on, the airport protection, this was taken out of the old master plan. The current zoning actually does not comply with the airport master plan, in the fact that it did allow a lot of single-family residential, multifamily residential into that zone. So unfortunately, because it was zoned, not necessarily according to what the FAA would want to see, even though they don't have particular guidance against it, we may have some issues with this particular grant assurance. I think we're still in line, but this is a grant assurance when we accept federal dollars. It's the land compatibility grant assurance, and just to make sure the zoning is in accordance with making sure that the airport can still function going forward and moving forward in the future. So one of the things that it does add, this map is in your packets as well, if you can't see clearly those zones, it is a little bit small. The black line that is surrounding the actual airport, that is the noise contour zone. That is the only line that the FAA really cares about when it talks about, it's a 65 DNL line. That's where the airport can put money into noise attenuation going forward. This is the line that may or may not grow depending on the fleet size going forward with future development. The rest of those zones and colors are the airport impact zones. These have nothing to do with noise, they're purely safety zones in the fact that an airplane is more or less likely to have an accident within these areas. So when George referenced Zone 3, if you look on the south end of the main runway there, there's Zones 1, 2, and 3, the green zones are the 3, that is where the Deep Well Ranch master plan is wanting to encroach. So it was really a question, the only thing that I really tried to analyze was what were they asking for, and what were we getting in exchange? And so that's really what I looked at, is they were asking for residential and commercial to encroach on that Zone 3, where it was previously zoned as light industrial, and, but what they were giving us in return was a lot of open space. And I think that that's the important thing to get here in my analysis and my recommendation, is because we were getting a lot of open space versus light industrial, which really could propose a potential issue or problem going forward. If we have, at last meeting, it was references, we could have three Ruger plants, fully staffed 24 hours a day, putting a lot of people and a lot of buildings and infrastructure in those zones based off of the light industrial. With the master plan, what that does is it keeps the majority of those zones clear. I think it has like a baseball field. But it's where a pilot could land, and it's where it would be very little impact if there was, we can, yeah. I don't know how to work this thing, though. So it would be less of an impact in the event of an accident in those areas. And I think that's the important thing to understand whenever I was looking at it. The residential, based on the land use groups and what's currently zoned, it's not working, sorry. And I kind of lost my train of thought there, but I'm sorry about that. So the point being that I think that we will continue to see, regardless of your vote, we'll see an increase to the airport fund, because you're putting residential close to the airport. That automatically will kickstart more noise investigations, more noise complaint calls, low-flying aircraft calls, that kind of thing, which will put more pressure on airport fund and its employees. I think we won't see any grant dollars specifically to noise attenuation in the future. That typically would be funded by an FAA grant, but because we are going against the FAA recommendation to put residential, again, this is regardless of if you approve or not approve this plan. I think that we won't receive any grant dollars specific for noise attenuation, and I think it puts pressure to limit growth on the airport in the future, or it can, depending on how it goes. But the summary is, the important thing is, the piece thing is, the pieces that I looked at were, what were they offering, what were they giving up, what were we getting in return? We are losing, we are gaining some encroachment on that Zone 3 for commercial and residential, but we are gaining a lot of open space. And I think that that is important. So, my summary is that really, this is a better option for the airport, to accept the master plan because of this difference within the, what's being currently zoned versus what's being proposed. Sorry, I tried to go through that really, really fast.
Questions from the council? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, it's time for a public comment. So, why don't you call the first name?
Daniel Mattson.
Remember, five minutes or less.
My name is Daniel Mattson. I live over on Merritt Street. When I signed that, the main reason that I was wanting to come up here was to point out that when the General Plan Committee was discussing future development, the area, the Deep Well Ranch area was very definitely looked at as, this is where a lot of our economic development and future growth would be. So, in that respect, I mean, that's where we were expecting it to be. That looked like the area that would best fit the city to grow in that area. So, I welcome the idea of a master plan for that area. In my position on the Board of Directors of the Appaloosa Regional Transit, I can envision that it probably would not be very hard for us to service that area. Now, that's not an official position, that's just my opinion, but it's an educated opinion. I, again, the density and all that, I'm not going to really say too much about that. If they didn't have the master plan, I think we'd be worse off. The James family has done a lot of good things for the area. I think, I expect they're probably going to do this in a way that benefits the city more than not. So, I think it's a good idea. The details, of course, need to still be worked out. I would suggest that we push for not allowing anything that's going to limit the airport in the future, if we can get away with it. But overall, I see the master plan here as being inevitable. It's just the fine details are all that need to be tweaked. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Patty Schaefer.
Well pronounced, thank you. Patty Schaefer, 5171 Diamond Drive, 86301. New to the area, and I find I love this area more than almost anything else I've ever loved in my life. I spent the last 43 years as a slave to science, to Space and Missile Systems Center of the U.S. Air Force in Los Angeles. Thank you for taking my comments. Tell you what I told a general there, in 2015, something amazing happened, unprecedented maybe since even the world wars. Basically, every nation in the world came together and signed an agreement to limit global warming, the hazardous effects that we're expecting. Out of that came a couple interesting things, but how in the world would you get these nations that basically don't like each other to sit down and talk and agree on something while somebody scared the poop out of them? People who did that was the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. The AR5 Assessment Report pointed out that we're right now at a 1.5% chance of global kill starting before the end of the century. So, that's really scary. What does 1.5% mean, okay? It means 1,500 aircraft falling out of the air every day. Would you even fly on a plane if that was happening every day? It means 10 to 50 fatal accidents in the Prescott area every day. That's 1.5%. So, yeah, that's pretty scary. That's why they came together. But what came out of that was the science of planetary boundary theory, which informs hydrology, to people who know about it, which has nine boundaries that will keep our planet within the Holocene, which is this miraculous 10,000-year period we've lived in that gave rise to our civilization, and that we all want to keep going for our grandchildren. You know, by the end of the century, a significant number of us will be pushing up daisies. But we have grandchildren. And interestingly enough, one of those boundaries plays to the water issue, and it's that of watersheds. So, watershed by watershed, this has been analyzed throughout the globe now. The general result is that to stay in the Holocene, you've got to keep half the water in the watershed. Now, I'm not familiar with law. I've worked in fact all my life. I've been a slave to science. But I do know, scientific law always trumps human law. No one in their right mind would pass a law against tornadoes, or hurricanes, or earthquakes, or droughts. It can't be done. But this business of the planetary boundary now tells you how the planet is responding. And in my simple-minded way, almost done here, in my simple-minded way, what that means is, any water you see on the table, cut it in half and push half of it off the table because it's not really there, if you want to pass on a resilient future. And I was really glad to hear you use the words resilience, that were used on both sides here. But I think everyone needs to hear these facts. The SMC didn't want to hear them. And that's one of the reasons I took early retirement. But of course, their commander-in-chief is not necessarily our commander-in-chief. I guess, you guys have an obligation to the citizenry. But I think this is what's causing the polarization, is they're seeing the water as a representation of this larger problem. And I wanted to make sure you heard those facts, those scientific facts. And I'd be willing to brief anyone who is interested offline. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joe Gardner.
George, is the overhead working?
It isn't, actually. I'm sorry.
I'll have to try to do this verbally. I'm Joe Gardner. Most of you know me. Oh, 2210 Skyline Drive. And I have been designing multifamily projects in Prescott, starting 40 years ago. Townhouses, condos, apartments, patio homes, a lot of single-family homes. I've also done them in other cities. And there are many restrictions in the current zoning that greatly limit what can be done. And they haven't really been talked about, but they include, first of all, the area. When you take out the land that they're going to use for commercial in this, you're left with 227 acres of high-density residential. Their proposal would allow high-density residential over 1,200 acres. The maximum height under current multifamily high is 40 feet. Their proposal's 50 feet. The maximum lot coverage of a building is 50%. Theirs is unlimited. When you factor those in, it becomes much, much easier to get to a high number of residences than you can today. I really would like you to look at Willow Creek Apartments. You're probably familiar with it. It's the project that's in trouble. That, on a gross acreage, units per acre calculation, is about 17 units per acre, 21 units per acre net. And that's tight. And that is as tight as you can get under the existing zoning. You just can't get 30 to the acre under the existing zoning, parking also. So, those things all limit what you can actually build greater than. And it's an unfortunate feature of our zoning ordinance that we say you can do 30 or 32 per acre when there are other provisions that you really can't. So, I have calculated, and I was going to put it up, but I can certainly share it with you. But when you figure the 227 acres at the realistic build today, and even, you know, dense realistic, like the Willow Creek Apartments, you come down to 4,800 units. And anyway, also, the commercial area, I think, is overdone. And then, oh, I didn't open up with my nice statement. I read just today a quote from David Hume, and it was, "Truth springs from argument amongst friends." And I really hope that you'll listen to the people of Prescott. I don't think the vast majority of the people of Prescott think that 10,500 homes on that property is appropriate. Additionally, guesthouses, timeshares, condominium hotels, and they say et cetera, are not counted in that total. In our current zoning, they are. So, there are uncounted residential units that could be on top of the 10-5. And then, if you take the density that they're proposing and extrapolate that over Prescott's 28,000 acres, Prescott could have a population of 352,089 gateway malls. I don't think that that is a reasonable request. And thank you.
Thank you.
Ted Wickstrom.
Good afternoon. My name is Ted Wickstrom, 401 Doherty. Been flying out of the Prescott Airport for 20 years. And I represent the Prescott Airport Users Association, membership of 180, mostly pilots, and inside-the-fence businesses. As a follow-up to Jesse Baker's comments, I thought it would be helpful to share with you some research that Currie Lee did regarding National Transportation Safety Board accident data from the Prescott Airport for the last 20 years, and some speculations regarding what that means for the next 50 years. The Deep Well Ranch project, Zone 3, is adjacent to the sixth busiest runway in Arizona, about 350,000 operations a year. Airplane accidents in homes occur. And at the Prescott Airport, there have been, in the last 20 years, 86 accidents. Three of those accidents occurred in Zone 3 of the airport, which is going to be in proposed relatively high-density structure environment. This is the overlay of the National Transportation Safety Board accident plot for the Prescott Airport for the last 20 years. Is this going to happen? Of course, it's going to happen. And the recommendation of the Airport Users Association is that the open space that has been obligated is preserved in perpetuity because this is going to happen. If we extrapolate the data, there's going to be 172 more accidents in the next 30, 40 years. There's going to be nine of those which occur in Zone 3, and there's going to be four of them that involve fire and 12 fatalities. Our recommendation is that the open space, the clear space, be preserved in the development agreement in perpetuity. That's what it looks like. The yellow triangles are the clear spaces. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Bill Feldmeyer.
It's a lot cooler up here than it is way back in that corner. Mayor, Council, good afternoon. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you today. I sat through the conversations you had with staff a week ago, and then sat through it again today. I find them both very interesting, enlightening. The level of detail that I believe that was provided by staff and the questions that you had, I think, are remarkably detailed. And I must tell you that I'm certainly impressed with the length of time that all of you have spent to bring this forward to this point. I came here today because I have, well, I must tell you, I guess my residence in Prescott is at 434 South Alarkin. I'm about three and a half blocks walking from City Hall on the south side. South side's the best side of Prescott. In any case, I came last week to listen and learn because I'd been reading and listening to news reports along the way about what this project was all about. And because I've been involved for a number of years in local politics, and county politics, and state politics as well, and public policy as a whole, and because I've lived here and my investments are here, it's important to me to see what transpires long after I leave this community as good a shape as it was when I came here. So, I recognized as part of my review on what this is about, is that there's good planning and bad planning, to make it simple. A lot of the planning that I dealt with at the county when I was there for the almost 11 years was really no planning, so that led to bad planning, was lot splits. And I think the city wisely went to the James family and asked for that pre-annexation to hopefully avoid that. And it did that. It was through the city's initiative. It went through that pre-annexation agreement, the annexation, and then as a part of, I think, the approval of the general plan brought us to this point we are at today. Right now, subdivisions that might be provided via the Deep Well Ranch can happen without any of these conversations taking place. All I have to do is submit the proposal and meet the criteria under the existing land development code, and then go to work. And I would suggest to you that if we really want cookie-cutter subdivisions, and we want cookie-cutter trails and parks, you know, then that's really the mechanism we ought to be dealing with. We can chop it all up and then fight over a period of time how the connectivity will take place if we do these on an individual basis. Master planning is the way to go. And I believe, because it's in my world, that I create solutions for myself, for my family, for my business, for my clients. And that's what I do on a regular basis. And that's really one of the ways that I was able to survive here in Prescott. The ability to master plan 1,800 acres is really, in my view, a unique groundbreaking opportunity that just doesn't happen anywhere else. And I don't believe it's something we ought to fear. In fact, I think it's something we ought to embrace. And it's a real opportunity for us. The new challenges require new methods of doing business, and an 1,800-acre bite at doing business over the next 30 to 50 years is a remarkable opportunity. I wouldn't be afraid to step into the unknown just because it's a new concept. In fact, these opportunities await us in the future. I support this master plan, and I encourage this council, this council, to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have two more speakers. Larry Meads.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Larry Meads, 1504 Delilah Drive. I did my best to absorb the information on water that was presented on slides a while ago. And if I got it- ago, and if I got it, I noticed that the number of homes that could be built was based on them being water-efficient units, and it looked to me like there were some values proposed for water-efficient units, and one was .25 acre-feet per single-family unit or .15 per multifamily unit. And there was another value that was even better, I think, as I looked on the chart. And I just wondered if this plan does call for water-efficient units, and I wonder how that would be enforced. And if those numbers, as I saw on the table, looked to me like if this project gets all of the water allocation that they have prior to the Big Chino Unit coming online, then it looks like there's hardly any water available for future developments. And if that was the case, would this be the last development to be approved if we don't have the Big Chino Pipeline installed? It's not rhetorical.
Yeah, go ahead, Nancy.
I'm going to pull the slide back up.
Yeah, I'll need a slide. Turn that to make anybody sick while looking through this. Okay. I think that's a very good question, and thank you for letting me stand up and address that. So, with, this is a portfolio again, we're working out of the alternative portion of it here, but then when we flip to the next slide here, what is going on is, so there wouldn't be a halt to all development if this project moves forward. We do have contracts that we need to serve water up into Chino Valley, that water has been set aside. There's a vacant residentially-zoned reservation. It's not an entitlement, but it was pulled aside for lands that were identified within city limits that might grow at a later time. And then we have other water supplies that are intended for historic contracts, such as areas out in the Idlewild area and Iron Springs. So, what we have up here is generally there's a limited supply that's available in the general pool at this time, because the majority has been placed in contract. And, for the sake of time, we will be going through this, excuse me, November 28th, looking at a housing study to see what our housing stock looks like, looking at how much water we have in contract already for certain types of housing, and then we'll look back at the general pool and see what that also looks like as well. So, it's a good question, and then it's a fairly lengthy discussion that we put onto a council study session in the near future.
Sure to answer your question. Okay, thanks. Thank you, Leslie. Next.
Tom Riley.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I left here on November 24th at 4:31 PM, back in 2001, and I swore I'd never come back. But I just have to tell you that with all I'm hearing, all that I'm listening to, the arguments, it hasn't changed. I don't want to quote David Hume, I'm going to quote somebody else far more significant, Yogi Berra. It's like deja vu all over again. The arguments remain the same. They haven't changed. Our portfolios, our water portfolios, have gotten better since I've been here. The opportunity to plan the kind of acreage that we're talking about is unprecedented. For us not to take that on is absolutely insane. I would like to tell you that everything that you're going to hear, every word that I heard spoken up here, pro, con, is the same thing that I heard over twenty years ago. And it's not changing. But the future is what you need to look at. All of you need to look at that. And the opportunity to plan that land is, again, just absolutely fantastic. I know when I was on council, I had the temerity to make a phone call to Mr. James and ask him at that particular time, you know, we were concerned about what may or may not happen with that land. He politely suggested that it was his land, and I should mind my own damn business. And I did. And I will tell you now that he is coming forward, that group is coming forward with what I think to be an absolutely outstanding plan, something that we would have given our eye teeth for. And I also wanted to talk about one or the other, there were several subdivisions that have come into this town since I have been in this area, which has been just under forty years. And I will tell you that when I was sitting where you are, there was a subdivision that was said that if it got done, it was going to be, all hell was going to break loose. Dogs would start living with cats, life as we know it would no longer exist. And that subdivision was Prescott Lakes. And I will tell you that Prescott Lakes has been an absolutely wonderful addition to our community, and I have yet to see one subdivision that we've heard the cries and screams of, "Oh, my God, we're all going to die," that has come in that hasn't added substantially to the fabric of this community over the last forty years. And there isn't a single one of them. I can still walk downtown and see a friend of mine and sit on a park bench and visit. My wife, who has been here since 59, we were just the other day, drove past the town square, and she said, "Isn't it nice? The families are still playing out there with their kids, and the kids are out there, and people are just out there having a good time." And she remembers that back from the 60s. Not a whole bunch has changed, it's still a great town, it's still everybody's hometown, it's a friendly town, it's a wonderful town, and this ain't going to change it, it's going to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think we've got about two, three minutes here, so how do you plan to move forward on this?
At this point, I think council needs to make a determination, are we going to plug along? I think there's a couple more things we want to discuss, we've got to work on the Development Agreement. We are under a pressed timeline with this council as it says today, but if the commitment is there to keep moving, we'll keep the train on the tracks and keep it running. It's up to you guys at this point.
I absolutely would like for us to plug along and even speed it up a little.
I think we still need to get through traffic and Development Agreement, and I think, City Attorney, you're concerned whether or not that could even be done in the amount of time we have left.
Well, I will tell you, I think the Development Agreement, I think both sides need to continue working on Development Agreement. I don't know, I don't think it's going to be ready to talk about in a week, on the 14th, but I, you know, Sophie wanted to do a study session to go through, I guess, the engineering and public works, I suspect that would take
We could do that next week.
...a solid part of that two-hour block.
Just have the Development Agreement looming and pending.
And I don't know if there are other study session items, because that's a regular meeting week.
What were you saying, George? I don't think there's anything else from a study session perspective, is there?
For November 14th.
Yeah.
There is the overview of wastewater and the business license update, so we have two items.
Well, it's potentially that we could wait on those as well. Is the overview of wastewater necessary for, next week it's necessary?
It's always necessary with you.
It's always necessary with you.
Maybe we could wait on the business license.
We could wait on the business license.
Maybe we can start an hour early and get them both done.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a potential executive session, so on a couple of issues. You know, it's up to you, you know, we can start whatever time of day, but if we talk about the public, you know, the engineering and public works, you know, that's probably a solid hour or more. No, he's shaking his head, no. Tom's shaking his head, yes. I mean, so that could be a solid standalone discussion on the sort of engineering requirements, specifications. I will tell you that the Development Agreement is probably not going to be ready to discuss. I'd be surprised if it were ready to talk about next Tuesday.
Why don't we try to handle the other two things next Tuesday? If the interest is there to keep plugging along, let's plug along.
Okay, so, we'll have another study session, the third one on Deepwell, on the 14th, starting at 1,300.
Sounds good.
Okay.
That's one o'clock for people who aren't in the military.
Thank you for coming, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.